My name is Thomas Whitmoyer and I will be moderating our meeting this evening with the Education Committee of the Town Council and the Board of Finance in a joint meeting to discuss the audit report of the Board of Education covering the years 2000, fiscal years 2018 to 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I would like to start with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. You take a moment to pause and be concerned about the unfortunate violence in our nation's capital this afternoon and this evening, and pray that everything works out and comes to an expeditious end. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you would call the roll, please.
Thomas Whitmore.
Here.
Joanne Glasser Orenstein.
Here.
Carl Masaro.
Here.
Michael Miller.
Here.
Kevin Shively.
Here.
Donna Sidell. Lori Rosasco Schwartz. And Lisa Valente. I'm going to call the Board of Finance roll of call now. Laney McHugh.
Here.
Mark Mascola. I thought I saw him before.
He's here.
He's there. Christine L. Eris.
Here.
Vincent DiGennaro.
Here.
Elaine Hammers.
Here.
Martin Isaac.
Here.
Stephen Choi.
Here.
Michael Bark, I'm sorry, I don't know how to, Barker.
Barker.
Yeah, read my own handwriting.
All good.
Paul Timpinelli.
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very, very much. All right. I would like to welcome the Board of Finance. This is a joint meeting mostly just to try to be efficient as we work through this process of studying the audit of the Board of Education for the Education Committee to do it and, and ask questions and then follow up, follow up with the Board of Finance and back to the Education Committee and so on would seem redundant. And so I think it was best and was very pleased that we could have this joint meeting this evening. The purpose is to just openly discuss some of the findings, our concerns in this report. And unfortunately tonight, which we knew ahead of time, the auditor could not attend this meeting. He will be attending next week when we meet on the 13th of January at 7:00 PM. And so I would like to be able to collect questions specific to the audit that he could explain and put into context, you know, of his, of his process. Okay? Before we start, for our listening audience in the community, I just wanted to start, you know, with how did we get where we are? And last year, on January 29th, the Council, Town Council Finance Committee moved a resolution TC 2832 initiating an audit of the accounts of the Board of Ed pursuant to Chapter 2, Section 10A of the Charter of the Town of Trumbull. The resolution was passed unanimously. On February 3rd, the Town Council unanimously adopted a resolution TC 2832, also initiating an audit of the accounts of the Board of Ed and passing it as emergency legislation. On March 2nd, the final scope of the audit was published for bits. Bids were to be submitted by March 17th. Interviews within interested firms would follow and then a return to the Town Council for funding. On April 6th, the Town Council selected PKF O'Connor Davies LLP to perform the audit for a fee not to exceed $36,000. Motion carried 17 to 3. The audit was performed from May 2020 to October 2020. On June 1st, TC Resolution TC 2879 was amended to include a fourth standing committee, the Education Committee. The charge of this committee was to review the audit upon completion and report the findings to the Town Council and to have a charge moving forward with the Board of Education. On September 8th, the Education Committee met for the first time for organizational purposes. At this time, the audit was not complete. There was speculation it would be a minimum of four to six or more weeks. Discussion ensued on other areas to study, including but not limited to general Board of Education operations, financials, COVID-19 response, and protocols, facilities, and technology. The audit final report was delivered by PDF on December 23rd, 2020. It was distributed to the Town Council on the 29th of December, and it was published to the community on the website on January 4th. Okay? I know that there are concerns as to the date on the report, which is October 30th, 2020, and the distribution date or the receiving date of 12/23. And so I want to clarify for those concerned with that, that in discussing with Joe Santafanti, the auditor, he wrote to me that the date on the report is the normal date, that the initial draft was completed. The additional time between that and the issuance of the final report is for our review process and their internal review process. And he confirms with us, and he will do that again next week, that he sent us the final draft on December 23rd, 2020, as indicated in his email. And I have those emails as well. So I hope that that would be sufficient to quell any concerns that, you know, there was not transparency in this process. I'd now, I'd like to read a statement regarding the audit of the Board of Education. "The Town Council requested an audit, audit of the operational review of the Board of Education for fiscal years ending 6/3018, 6/3019, and 6/3020, which will be known as the review period, to analyze and identify the accounting procedures, current budgetary practices, and internal financial controls. This was done in the hope it could provide recommendations for best practices moving forward. The auditor reviewed accounting procedures as necessary to assess the accuracy of budgeted expenditures, appropriations, and transfers, and actual expenditures during this review period. The overriding takeaway from the audit is that the district's current and past processes for budget development, budget documentation, and budget management and monitoring are not adequate. In several instances, the district does not comply with state law, best practices, established Board of Ed policy, and our town charter. Maintaining proper processes and procedures is critical to ensuring the Board of Education's ability to accurately and transparently budget and carry out its operations. Each year, the town is tasked with determining a reasonable budgetary allotment for the Board of Education. During the years in review, the town has significantly increased funding to the Board of Education. Despite these budget increases and for reasons unknown, the school administration continued its noncompliant practices, which had been apparently going on for several years prior. However well-intended these practices may have been, budgets need to be forecasted, reported, and accounted for with accuracy and transparency. Otherwise, the system will break down, as clearly has been the case. While the purpose of the audit was not to determine responsibility for the potential Board of Education's budget deficit, which was identified early in 2020, the auditor's findings make clear that failure to maintain proper institutional controls and procedures certainly were contributing factors which created a situation where this would occur. All stakeholders in the Board of Educational, Board of Education operational process, namely the Board of Ed, the Superintendent, and Business Office, need to provide, need to put more rigorous processes in place to bring the Board of Ed into compliance with state law, established financial and reporting policies and best practices. We cannot let the current situation continue nor allow what happened in 2020 to happen again." Thank you. So, that being said, and as I stated before, I'd like just to open up this discussion, get different people's views on what they saw as highlights and concerns in this audit report. I don't want to get too deeply into it because I really want the auditor to do, to put everything into context for us, that we're not necessarily jumping to conclusions and that we're reporting things correctly to the community. But there is a lot to discuss. So if we can, you know, share ideas here, have a little roundtable forum, and, and again, come up with questions that I can send to him, that he can, you know, come up with, with answers to in a more expedient manner and just be prepared for, for what we, what our concerns are. I think that would be great for next week. So Laney, if you'd like to start this off.
Thanks, Tom. For everybody who wishes to participate this evening, if you could use the raise your hand feature and wait to be recognized, there's a lot of us on the call. I'd like to perhaps start by asking Tom to look at the executive summary and findings and recommendations first. Tom, do you want to go through just the executive summary? And maybe by going that way, people have questions in the executive summary they could ask there, and please identify yourself before speaking.
I think that's right. I think that's great. Okay, so the one great takeaway in this was that there were tremendous amount of recommendations that I understand unofficially, some of them have already been put into place. I'm hoping that's the case. But, you know, he starts out the, the report with an executive summary of findings and recommendations. We, he writes, "We recommend that the district develop and implement a comprehensive budget development policy. The policy should address the following items: the format, which includes overall details and supporting schedules, types of required budget support for each significant area or type of expenditure, budget methodology for significant budget areas and types of expenditures, and methodologies for accounts that may not have budget support. Requirement to provide and review at a minimum of three years of prior actual expended amounts and require justification for budgeting less than the three-year average. Responsibilities of department heads and the Board of Education. Capital replacement plan. Prohibit the use of negative budget amounts to balance the budget. And approval and the use of special revenue funds and any of transfers and of any transfers that will support the annual operating budget." His next point is develop, implement a formal process for monitoring changes in the district that have a significant impact on the budget. Three most significant areas that we noted need to be monitored on a real-time basis as are as follows: salaries and benefits, overtime, and special education costs. Okay. Budget development, C, budget for known costs, including extra subpar professionals and retirement payout for vested secime and other retirement benefits. Compliance, based upon our review, we recommended the district implement procedures to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding budget transfers, town charter regarding the issuance of debt, town purchasing policy for quote and bid requirements. Based upon a review, we recommend that the Board of Ed receive and review financial information for all district activity on a monthly basis. The board's current policy does not require the board receive reports for the following funds: the school lunch fund, the grant fund, and the transportation fund. The board receive monthly detailed reports, all accounts, from the district's financial software for the budget. If necessary, management can provide a supplemental report to support the review and discussion by the board. And that the board formally approve any use of resources from other funds, special revenue funds, school lunch funds, and et cetera. As far as special education, we need to formally document the amounts included in the proposed budget. We need to revise its procedures for estimating and entering cost information into the State Department of Education excess cost system to be only the students expected to exceed the minimum threshold for reimbursement. We need to develop and implement a form to be developed and to estimate the total cost for identified excess cost students and to account for the actual cost of the student for audit purposes and final reporting to the state. Develop and implement formal procedures to monitor special education costs and a formal process for communication to the Finance Department to adjust budget projections and actual budget lines as necessary." Do you want me to stop there and maybe discuss anything under those particular areas that came to anyone's mind?
I think that's a good plan, Tom. Again, this is Laney McHugh, Board of Finance. If anybody would like to open the discussion in regards to the executive summary or the overall audit and findings, can you just raise your hand? Marty?
Good evening. This is Marty Isaac on the Board of Finance. I guess I want to, I just wanted to make a couple of observations. First, I guess I would say, reading this is shocking. I mean, it is absolutely shocking what has happened here. When you go through such a long list, you know, it loses some of its impact. You know, as you read this, it's identified that we were literally not following the law. The Board of Ed was not following, or the administration, however, in that, in that it was not, the law was not being followed, which is just hard to fathom. And I guess from my perspective, I'd like to understand, and I understand we only looked at the three years. But I guess I don't understand, how did this happen? When did this start? And, and how did, how did we go off the rails so much? It can't be the case we've always not been following the law. And so what I guess I would also ask when he comes back is, as we prioritize how we're going to fix these things, first and foremost, we need to get in compliance. So I would be nice if there was, I mean, there's so much, this is like a 50-page, 80-page document of nightmares. It would be helpful if there was a concise area of, here are the five areas or areas that you're breaking the law, that you need to stop doing that now. Here are the areas where you're out of compliance with town policy. You need to stop doing that now. I'll just, I'm just going to make a few comments and then I'll let others talk. To me, it was shocking. We say deficit spending, but spending beyond an account, it makes our whole budget process kind of ridiculous. You know, if we're going to fund a certain amount of money and then they can continue to spend in deficit spend, what's the point of funding a lineup? It just, it's kind of ludicrous. There was an example in this document where it was pointed out that there were 39 paras that were employed outside of the budget process. Now, how in the world is something like that possible? It is, it's shocking. There was an element in there that apparently there was a timekeeping system that was purchased in 2016 that the, the report indicates has never been used. I can go on and on. I guess, this is a very long, comprehensive document. I would say we got our money's worth for 35,000. It's pretty comprehensive report, and I'm appreciative to have it. I also would wish that the, the auditor can walk us through it in detail. I will say, personally, I get a bit lost as you get into some of the special ed areas and making clear, understanding what he's proposing there, or she, the auditor is proposing that wasn't entirely clear to me. But this is, this is pretty shocking, and I think the solution for it needs to be very tight in terms of who's going to be responsible. I'll let other people's talk to in terms of the, the recommended response to it. I just, I am shocked reading this and quite disappointed.
Thank you. I see that Paul, Joanne, and Michael have their hands up. I'm going to go in that order if that's okay. Paul Timpinelli?
Yeah, Paul Timpinelli, also a member of the Board of Finance. First, I would support and echo everything that Marty Isaac has just indicated. After reading this report, and most of you know I've been involved in one level or another in the town of Trumbull in its political processes and government processes for almost 50 years, this was the most shocking, disturbing, and disappointing document with regard to our governmental processes that I have ever looked at. And we can spend a lot of time going through the weeds and going through all of the recommendations within the report, but let me start by two procedural questions. One, Tom, thank you for that, that letter of introduction. I think it was very well-written, strong, forthright. I have a question about it, and that is, who are the signatories of that letter? And does it go to the Board of Education elected members? As well as the appointed administrators that are responsible for this fiasco? And two, when the letter is submitted, what do you think, if you know at this point, is going to be the procedural result of that? As Marty indicated to me, this should be about, how do we correct this and during what time period? Not so much who is responsible, not so much who is to blame, because obviously it's been occurring for quite some time disappointingly, so therefore there are a lot of folks to blame. But how is this going to be corrected? From whom is that letter? And to whom is that letter?
Well, that letter is to the general public, that letter is to the Board of Ed, that letter is to the Long Hill Administration. And, you know, you bring up a good point. You know, we don't know how long this has happened, but what we do know is the people that we have in charge right now, the current administration is not responsible. Unfortunately, their responsibility is to begin fixing and resolving this and putting these, the safety gaps into place and these recommendations that we can have an ongoing discussion with and, and not allow this kind of thing to happen again. You know, and I echo Marty's thoughts and, and, you know, I have a list of eight things that literally have my head spinning. You know, and the employees, you know, the 39 employees hired, but not included in the budget that they came for and presented to us. The general lack throughout their budget of budget support, the misuse of the special revenue accounts, you know, basically borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. Well, sooner or later, there's no more Peters to borrow from, and this is, this is where we are. Taking out TD banknotes for leases on, on equipment without any town authorization whatsoever, that's probably one of the worst things. The transfer policies and procedures, that, you know, the, the right people were not necessarily aware of this was happening, or they just went along with it, which is not, is not, you know, appropriate. The immune system and human resources is not being implemented. We're not following in the town bidding process. There are a number of, a very high percentage of just going out and bidding on their own and, and we're trying to make that, you know, one thing that we can do things better and more efficiently and, and save money by going through the town bidding process. It's not, not being followed. And as also was mentioned, the Nova time, the employee, they didn't have the money to implement it. And so this is something that town has and the Board of Ed has. The town implemented theirs in 2016. We have yet to. However, we're paying a licensing fee anywhere between 50 and $100,000 a year for literally nothing. And so I, I don't know. Shocking doesn't even begin. And so with things like that, we have a lot. I think that, you know, I don't know that, I haven't looked at who's attending. But I think the message to the Board of Education and, and the, the administration is, we need to relook at this current budget and maybe, maybe take it back and start looking at how we begin fixing these things and have a plan in place because, you know, for the, for the people watching, the education budget is, is two-thirds of our town budget. And last year, we quibbled over $500,000. And people were very upset. It was a very contentious, very difficult budget season. One of, one of my hardest ones yet. And yet, we cannot just continue to pour money into a situation that is out of control. So that, that trust factor needs to, you know, begin again and, and start, start over again. And we need to have this dialogue, which I'm hoping the Education Committee can be the, the vehicle for, to have this ongoing discussion with the Board of Education and the Town Council and the Board of Finance, not just during budget season, but through the year, through the year.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Hello?
Bill, do you know who that is?
I don't know who that is. I'm trying to find it.
Mike, can you identify yourself, please? Oh, thank you. Tom, I'm going to interrupt you for a quick second. I have a bunch of hands that are raised. And I, I'm going to move on just to make sure that we get all of our questions out, and then we can address some specific items from there. Is that okay with you?
That's perfect.
Okay. I do see Elaine has her hand raised. We're going to move on to Joanne and then Michael and then Elaine. Joanne? You set on mute.
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Thank you. You can hear me, right? Okay, so I agree with everything that everyone has said. I've read this audit report twice. I don't, I can't say that I understand all of it, but what is abundantly clear is it's, it's just been sort of like a rogue system. It doesn't seem to have any, anything, any kind of connection with the budget that has been presented at all. And I agree with, with Tom that one of the things we have to really consider is, does the budget that's been presented by the Board of, by the, by the administration have any basis when we have this audit report in front of us that seems to say they put a budget together and then they do whatever they do, and they're not really the same? Which is, which is really, really my question, I have tons of questions throughout the thing, as I'm sure everybody does, but I, we, the Board of Ed as well as the administration do have this report in their hands, right? This audit report?
Yes, they should.
Okay. And yeah, so that was, that were my two main points is I think that the current budget needs to, you know, I, there was just so many different times where the budget presented one thing and the and the actuals had absolutely nothing to do with that. And there seemed to be many, many cases, whether it's special ed or just, you know, or paras or or insurance where, for whatever reasons, those costs were like, you know, sometimes three hundred percent what was budgeted. I can't imagine that happening in any other setting.
Joanne, I I agree. I'd like to see us ask some specific questions to the auditor next week, Tom, about, you know, what what led him to some of these findings and what documentation was there or not there to to be seen. I have
Broken up, I think.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I I I have that, those questions written down, Joanne. I think one of the things that we spoke about at the Board of Finance in our caucus, when when we first looked at the audit is making sure that, you know, we want it to be clear that when the Board of Education and the administration come to the town entity with their budget, that there really is a clear and concise roadmap to how we're going to address these issues point by point and who's responsible for that. So I'm hoping that that will be addressed as we move forward.
To address, Lainey, sorry.
That's okay.
Forgot which which, also with regard to Dawn Cantapio shared with us the Norris Report yesterday or the day before. It's an eighty page document of recommendations of savings that the town and 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 the and the Board of Ed could have by collaborating together. And it does seem like looking over the budget and the audit report and those things that that none of those recommendations from nine years ago were followed through on or made where we could have, you know, collaboration with the town in terms of purchasing and other or, you know, other shared or like services. So my hope would be very much that if there's changes in the budget or changes in practices or recommendations on that, that they be followed through on and that actually be done. Because I don't know what that Norris Report cost, but it's, you know, it's eighty pages that were just ignored from everything I could see.
Okay. I will incorporate that in the questions as well.
Madam Chair, excuse me, it's First Selectment to Sorrow. I believe that that's the Gibson Report, Joanne, you're referring to?
Yes.
Sorry, yes, yes. Gibson, sorry, you're right.
Okay, Michael Barker? Also Elaine and Steve, I do see your hands.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chairman Whitmore, for having us. I want to just, I want to make a comment and a question. I I wholeheartedly agree with Marty and Paul and the other colleagues that have spoken. And I would emphasize that over a year ago when I was elected, since that time, we have been asking questions on many of these topics through the Board of Education. They're not new questions. I'm glad we're finally getting some information as disturbing as it is. To my question, I'm interested to understand who owns these shortfalls. And so to the extent where that the auditor can, in cases where the law, policy or generally accepted accounting principles are not being followed in order to better understand how a solution could be affected, I would request that they provide us with the TPS staff position or the Board of Education position that would normally have been responsible for following that law or policy as well as the staff or board position that would have normally been responsible for overseeing their compliance if applicable. Thank you.
Thank you. I have that down. I'm moving on to Elaine Hammers. Kevin, I do see your hand up there. I didn't recognize you. You got so tiny. Hang on. But I'll get, I'll get to you. Elaine?
Yeah, hi. Hopefully you can hear me as I'm working off the phone. I guess where I'm coming from is I I certainly agree with everything Marty said. The only thing I would say is I'm not sure why anyone is surprised. We have had this conversation going back thirty years. When we put in munis, the town put in munis, the Board of Ed lagged behind. We asked that they use the same codes that we used so that those of us on the Board of Finance could follow their budget, which some of us still find hard to follow. Both Maria, our Finance Director Pyrez, and Therese Keegan, our internal auditor, have continually raised the issue that they asked for information. Therese either doesn't get it, gets it in a file she can't open, or is told no one has time to give it to her. We have been circling around this for so long that it is mind boggling to me. I do understand, and we have been told on a number of occasions, the Board of Ed has given us a lump sum of money and it is their right under state statute to move it around however they see fit. They have a particular issue with special ed. They are required to meet the needs. So they may have to hire a para or two or ten or twenty they didn't count on. I have less of a problem with them moving money around as I do with the total lack of internal controls. There's no excuse for that. The the unis system should have individuals that have certain rights and permissions. I am appalled that a payroll clerk who's processing a payroll can change someone's rate instead of human resources. Some of us spent a long time with the superintendent at the time when the town finally brought on a professional human resources person, suggesting that it was time that the Board of Ed, who has many more employees, had a professional and the position could well be shared. And after wasting an hour and a half of my voice, I was told that they had other monetary priorities and that wasn't. So they have never seemed to come to the realization that controls are important. And then when we give them all over a hundred million dollars, the controls are necessary. And so, you know, it's it's not a surprise. We we've listened to Board of Finance meetings to Therese's frustration. How long does it take her anytime she tries to audit an item on the Board of Ed? She finishes the town side quickly and 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 she's, it's like pulling teeth to get information. I think it's time someone be held accountable. I think the people who've asked who specifically is going to put each of these points into play is a perfectly reasonable expectation on the part of those that are handing them over a hundred million dollars. So I'm not surprised. I'm not shocked. I'm angry and I'm frustrated because I've been asking this question for a long time and there there are basic controls. There is not a single one of us that will disagree that these controls are important and necessary. And frankly, we've got them all in place on the town side. We have a charter that says if you need a product over a certain amount, you bid it. We have a purchasing department that's more than happy to do it. What is so hard? It's, you know, it's a dollar threshold. Over this, you bid it. Under this, you don't have to, but there's an approved list of bidders or approved list of vendors, excuse me. We frequently buy into the state list because we get their purchasing power. I understand that the Board's primary goal is to educate students, but there is a fiscal responsibility to spend the taxpayers' money carefully and assure they're doing it properly. And 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 there's, this is, this has, you know, no party side. We we all can agree on this. So we just have to figure out how do we finally make them do it? I am sorry. It is like thirty years of frustration building up over this. Thank you, Lainey.
I I, we do agree. I think that there are a lot of things that the internal controls and I think this audit really does identify that. And I think one of the questions that we'll beg for us to ask at some point is if this audit is sufficient or if we'll want to look at more of a forensic audit to see where the processes broke down and when things happened. And I think that that'll be a discussion to have at a later date and that the more important thing right now is to get us back on track moving forward. I have
And I think you're right. I think that we need to move forward. I'm not sure what we get by looking back at a forensic audit. We know the the procedures that need to be in place. And I know Therese is on the call, so she's liable to hate me for saying this, but we have an internal auditor who is always approach things as trying to be helpful and not punitive. They they can turn to her for help. Of course, that's up to the Board now, but you, Lainey, but, you know, she's always there and helpful.
Good. I think that that those will be the next discussions that we have once we really get our teeth into understanding where this audit is and and what needs to be done moving forward. So thank you for that. Steve, Troy?
Yep, hey, Lainey. I just wanted to talk, just quick high level that I think over the past three years of being part of the Board of Finance, which is a pleasure to try to help the town. There's always been some confusion on the Board of Ed side and the transparency that the town has given on the Board of Ed has always been opaque, which kind of reiterates what Elaine said, which is, we shouldn't be surprised this happened. I mean, if we keep getting half answers or no answers at all or the runaround, something is going on. So I think that on a going forward basis, there needs to be better transparency and more support from the Board of Ed in communicating with the town side. Some random questions that I have for the auditors are about the the punch clock system that we got, how the town implemented it and the Board of Ed did not. If the Board of Ed is saying that they don't have the resources, why was that not communicated to the town side so that we didn't pay the hundred thousand dollars in subscription fees for the year? We did pay that. The only question is, is that are we responsible to pay for that? Because we didn't use the resource, the, we didn't use the software, so we shouldn't have to pay for it. The second question I had was that, I forget what department it was, but in the audit, it said that benefits paid by the employee were budgeted, but they couldn't actually see the the payments coming out from the employees. So they weren't, the the audit said that they weren't sure if it was going to a different account. I just wanted to know, were the employees actually paying their fair share of the their benefits? The other question I had was, there were a few accounts that were negative balances. I just want to know how that's even possible to have a negative balance. If my checkbook went negative, my bank would be calling me, my vendor, my, you know, the electricity company will be calling me. A lot of people would be calling me telling me that there's a problem. So I'm just confused as to how there is no red flags being raised or anything of that nature to say, hey, look, we have a negative balance. We're not budgeting correctly. We need some help here. So I think, you know, and I agree with most people. Everyone's upset, but it doesn't do any benefit to kind of point fingers right now. But we need to talk to the people that were involved in this. And I know in the corporate world that people own certain accounts. So I think we should try to talk to the people that were responsible for these accounts to see what happened. Not necessarily look to blame someone, but to figure out what, where the process failed us. And going forward, I think the most important thing is, we definitely need to review our procedures. And we need to probably most likely run a parallel procedure or policy in tandem to see how they're working, how the current process worked and how the new process should work. And I believe this is the only for, only way for us to actually manage our budget correctly. And, you know, most citizens in Trumbull and in the country, I mean, if you guys have negative accounts, if we have negative accounts, I mean, we're getting kicked out of our houses. So the town is in a special situation where apparently we're able to do this, but I think that we owe it to the taxpayers of Trumbull to use their money wisely and properly. So I would be interested in seeing what the auditor sees.
As far as the punch clock? As far as the punch clock and the munis system, I do want to go back and look. I believe that even though we have that on the town side and the Board of Education side, that the fees are split, I'd have to go back and look, and I think that is definitely something to follow up on as far as implementation and why the fees were being paid and not implemented. So I did, I do have that down on the list.
Also, Lainey, also, if they're not, if it's not supposed to be paid or the Board of Ed couldn't implement it, why wasn't anyone telling us this? That would have been advantageous. It'd be like, hey, we don't have the resources. Can someone either help us or take us off the list? We don't want the software.
Okay, I do have that written down to make sure that it makes the list for Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Kevin Shively, and then I see Carl Mazzaro, and then Paul, your hand is up again.
Thank you, Lainey. So
Kevin, we're losing your audio. And if you could just introduce yourself again.
Okay, Kevin Shively, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So I just wanted to agree with several of the other comments, especially those by Ms. Hammers when she's talking about, one of the things that I found kind of glaringly missing in the audit report was kind of a and I don't mean pointing fingers necessarily, but just an understanding of kind of where the responsibility was in terms of especially, and I think Michael Barker mentioned this as well, especially in those areas where we did not follow or even broke state statute in terms of how we were operating in terms of the the finances. And not necessarily to to call people into account or to make any punishments or anything like that or any kind of sanction, but especially just so we understand where in the structure of our of our administration, those things, so that we can learn going forward and catch those things and actually build systems and checks and balances to be able to make sure that those kind of things don't happen again. I am also very interested in, because my main concern is going forward, right? I I'm less concerned with a forensic audit, what happened in the past as opposed to what we can learn for the future and making sure that we we don't go down this path going forward. But in addition, I think it's been raised a couple of times now that and Joanne, I think, mentioned this as well, that, you know, how did this affect or did this have any effect? Any of the things that the shortfalls and the accounts or these kind of things? I I'd like to know whether or not any of that had any effect in the the request as before us now for next year in the Board of Ed. And I really want to know, you know, if, did they know any of this stuff? I I doubt that they did because they were very fast this year in terms of presenting a budget to us or budget request to us. It it seems unlikely that they had time to to really see any of this stuff or even were gotten it in time to to affect their request in that process. But I'd like to know whether or not that's the case. And if not, now that they, now that we know these things, does that change anything materially in terms of their request in these accounts? Because, you know, this this may, we may need to take a little bit more time to kind of go through these, some of those areas, especially especially those special accounts that, you know, had monies that were being kind of sloshed around, if you will, you know, in between different things and being used for things that they were not originally earmarked for. So, you know, I think that there's no way that this doesn't have some material effect on next year's budget, right? It can't, it can't possibly not affect next year's budget. So we need to know those things. And then going forward, you know, the I think you, somebody had mentioned, you know, what do we do in terms of of a follow up? I think that we need to just to develop, obviously, a plan for how to avoid these things in the future and and structural changes that will allow us to not have somebody like Ms. Hammers suffer for thirty years of of going through these things and and having all this frustration of of not being able to make these changes. We need to make these changes now and make sure that we solidify them for the future, but also have a follow up plan so that we're maybe have a follow up instead of a forensic audit of what happened in the past, but what, you know, what we've done so far in a few years, go back and look at these things and see and and actually have a report of have these changes actually made the the structural improvements that we intend them to. That's, that's really where I would focus our future investments and and time and resources in terms of evaluating any structural changes that we've made now and be able to judge whether or not those things are taking effect. And if not, then make those appropriate changes going forward again to make sure that they do make those changes.
Yeah, thank you. Just in passing, one of the things that in the budget last year was an addition to the IT department on the town side to add space for cloud migration of the IT system. I get that completely wrong because I'm so not tech savvy. But the reason that we did that was it would open up the ability for the munis system to communicate from the Board of Education to the town to run reports for the flow of information. And there there had been resistance to do that in the past, but that was one of the the big reasons that we made that investment when it came to the Board of Finance. So I think, I do think those are questions worth asking and hopefully we can make some head when it came to the Board of Finance. So I do think those are questions worth asking and hopefully we can make some headway to that.
Well, to add to that, I would just add then just real quick that, you know, this, that our Town Council Education Committee would be a perfect body for that kind of information to flow to, right? And as a further check and balance, right, so that we can make sure that that we have more eyes on these things and make sure that we're not missing anything.
Okay. I have your questions down as well. Carl Mazaro?
Any, thank you. Probably nothing more frustrating in 19 years of adopting budget is to get out of my chair that night and wake up the next morning and know that the Board of Education budget looks totally different than what we had adopted by line item the evening before. And over the years, I've, I've learned it was a necessity, sometimes an evil necessity because the education world and the expense that goes with it does change over the course of the year significantly. Areas like special education, healthcare and those types of benefits, changes in personnel over the course of year are, are factors that require that flexibility. I know frustration of councils past have been appropriating line items for things like technology repairs only to, those things never take place in that fiscal year. And of course, those of us in charge to do things on the town side for the benefit of our educational district, to be sure that those things finally took place. So although this was not a very good read, I understand a lot of the expenditures going from one account to another. I always questioned whether line items that did not appear in the budget that was adopted and occurred during the course of the fiscal year, I always wondered the legitimacy of doing that without coming back either to the Board of Finance or the council to approve that. However, I sort of got over that, discussing it with a few different chairs over the years. Again, you can't predict what's going to happen over the course of a fiscal year that you need to make some expenditures for. And I just wanted to bring that to light. I did have a couple of questions, not necessarily with the report, but just the last three years that the report covers. Did the Board of Ed balance out at the end of its fiscal year or were they over budget, so to speak? Anybody answer that? Because I know it's, you know, annually, we turn the calendar page in January and February, and we're considering budgets for the coming fiscal year. You know, we've always frequently heard that the Board of Ed wanting over budget.
This is Marty Isaac. Carl, I could answer a piece of it. I know when we rolled over this year, that the lunch program was in deficit several hundred thousand dollars. And what was particularly frustrating to me was they had renegotiated the bus contract, as you recall, and applied that money not to the deficit, but to the following year program. So I do know they rolled over a deficit on the lunch program.
I think one of the concerns is that they were using things outside of their operating budget to balance out their operating budget, those special revenue accounts, and whether they were able to do that. So maybe it looked that they balanced their budget at the end, but where they were taking the money from was not. So they ran those accounts in deficit. I'm not sure there was enough information in some of the areas for the auditor to to get a clear picture. That's something that I'd really like to know more about. He indicated that there were missing records or records not available to him. And, you know, whether, I think it was more difficult for him having a change in staff, not being able to go to specific people for answers. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that from them. I think that may answer some of those questions for you, Carl.
Yeah, so that was, that occurred in.
You're cutting in and out, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm not doing anything differently. It's just, it's just cyberspace. No, I, I, I'm interested in knowing that question because I know, you know, it's an annual strain, if you will, on the business office over in the Board of Education to come in at budget on June 30. And, you know, historically, they've always been able to do that, even though they've had some rough water over the course of their fiscal year.
Yeah, I, I don't personally have a problem with them moving money from account to account. If we give them a hundred and nine million dollars and they spend a hundred and nine million dollars, that's okay. It's when they're spending more than the one hundred and nine million dollars, but they're not sure because they weren't writing it down or they weren't getting proper approval or following the transfer procedure. So I think that to me is, is going to be really something that we're going to want to see how their controls are moving forward so that there's better, better able, better ability to say, oh, yes, here's how you spent your hundred and nine million dollars or here's how you spent your hundred and seven million dollars. So I think that that will be a positive moving forward. I do see that Michael Miller has his hand up and I see that Paul Timpinelli had his hand up again as well. Carl, did I have all of your questions down?
Yeah, I wasn't really, that was my only real question, because I know, you know, I mean, I don't really remember other than a couple of particular years that had special reasons for the Board of Ed coming for supplemental.
Okay. I am keeping good track.
Several years. And it doesn't genuinely happen. Right, and Carl, to speak to that, you know what, you come to the council for a supplemental, you, you're communicating. All right, you're saying, okay, we have a shortfall. We're letting you know this is why it is. That's a whole different case. We may not always agree to, you know, to the funding of it. But the point is that, that there was an initiative from the Board of Ed to fix it. And, and that's what we're not seeing now in this report. And I don't think it's only in the last three years. I'm sure it's, you know, longer than that. You know, you asked about the overall budget, the things that we have to consider. I mean, they, they could, you know, mark out zero, zero, zero across the board through transfers and magic and, and whatever. But as, as we said, if there's an account that's running into deficit because they borrowed from it to make the budget look good, that's still overspending. They have a company credit card. Okay, so there's additional money that's been spent, not included in the budget, that's on this company credit card. And I don't know that there's controls on that. Who has, who has access to that? And who is a allowed to use that credit card and for what purposes? You know, that's, that's an issue. I would, I would, I would agree with that, going for, going for financial sources outside of what we appropriate is a big issue. Right, the TD Bank thing and nodding, not letting us allow, that's, you know, we've given you a hundred and something million dollars and you're still looking to find other ways to get more and, and not being forthright with it. And that's a problem. That's, that's a big problem. So these, these things have to be addressed immediately. I know the Gibson.
I do want to.
Go ahead.
I do want to just remind everybody that a lot of what's contained in this report does reflect back over prior fiscal years that we do have new administration in place, and I'm hoping that there, I see them on attending the call this evening. I hope that they're, you know, cognizant of what we're, what we're saying, that they're, you know, doing that. And they do appear very willing to work with us. So I'm hoping that we'll have positive changes moving forward. I'd like to just take a moment and remind everybody that we're about halfway through the executive summary. I'd like to recognize Michael Miller's hand because he hasn't had a chance to ask any of his questions yet. Kevin, I see your hand also. I would then like to just swing around and at least review back for the rest of the executive summary so that we get all the findings out and then compile our list of questions, if that works for everybody. Is that okay, Tom?
That's great.
Okay, Michael?
Thank you, Lainey. Mike Miller, so I have two questions. One relates to specifically what we can do for oversight. If we're dependent upon the Board of Education, working with the town to have any kind of oversight on their spending, their processes, anything else, is there anything else we can do? I know Michael Barker mentioned something, but it was, my question is, is there a formal body that needs to be put in place to oversee what this whole process looks like? If we're always going to be dependent upon an independent or doing what's appropriate, does this not come out again? I think that's the one primary question we would all agree should be answered. And the second one is not as much for the auditor, but this had been mentioned before as well, is what has already been addressed? You know, this is a comprehensive report, and I know Superintendent Semel was pretty well aware of a lot of the issues that the district had faced coming in, and I think that some of this had been addressed, or at least they're trying to address now. So I would be curious what we can spend less time on here as a body in recognition that the board is already trying to adjust to whatever is being done.
Sorry, new puppy. Michael, I have your questions down. Kevin, do you want to, do you have a question?
Just real quick, just real quick, I just, because there is one other thing that I would really be interested to know and understand. I mean, so I was reminded in some of the comments that, you know, there, there was rumblings that I've heard from some that there was some reluctance within the prior administration or within during the, during the audit to really, or maybe not reluctance, but just not full cooperation in terms of being able to get all the information that the auditor was, was requesting or, or getting the assistance that they really felt that they needed. I'd be interested to know first from the auditor, you know, what areas were you really running into resistance about getting the information that you, that you felt like you needed? And from either, I don't know if it's a legal question or what, but what recourse do we have to get that information from people that have either retired or left the school system at this point? Do we still have any recourse to compel cooperation to get some of that information going forward?
I would make a statement, I did ask if it had been discussed if there was any area of criminality that needed to be looked at, and the auditor did indicate that there was no area, if there had been an area of criminality, that he would have brought that to the attention right away. So I don't necessarily think that this was, you know, something malicious or nefarious. I think this was, you know, just a case of this is how we get it through and we make do and it caught up with them. So I think that that's something really important that we keep in mind. And if we do need to look more forensically, then that's a discussion of whether or not we make the investment in, in that kind of an audit. My understanding is that that was not the purpose of this. So we know what the procedures were that went awry, but we don't necessarily know where the, where the money was being moved from or to. And, and some of that may be due to documentation. So I'm not sure how you, you know, compel a procedural audit to, you know, what are they going to say? Oh, yeah, I didn't do it the right way. So I, I think what our, our main purpose right now is to make sure we get them back on track and doing things correctly and in compliance and that we have a handle on, on the budget so that at the end of the day, whatever money we think the town can afford that they're spending and that it covers what our needs are for the school system. I hope that, that we can take that and put that in a positive light. And then, you know, from there, if we have other questions, we could discuss it in that manner. So I'd like to keep the conversation tonight moving in that direction. Mark, I see your hand. Mark Mascola, I don't believe you're connected to audio, Mark. And then I do see your hand, Carl.
I just wanted to quickly respond to Michael Barker's question about how we, how we have oversight going forward. We do have an annual town audit that looks at the Board of Ed. So maybe that needs to be spruced up a bit. That's one way. We have our internal auditor as well, but they can be very honest over at Long Hill.
It would need it to be much more regular. In the report, they say it would be monthly reports coming through this. I would think yearly would be too infrequent.
And this is Michael Barker. No harm, but that wasn't my question.
There are a lot of Michaels.
Sorry, it was somebody else's. My apology.
Lainey, you're on mute.
Well, I saw that Mark Mascola was actually connecting and I was trying to see there. Mark, can we hear you now?
Yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, very good. Sorry about that. It's Mark Mascola on the Board of Finance. I guess I have, I have two questions, one for the auditor and one, I think, for the, for the Board of Ed. So the first one would be, you know, and this maybe goes to the comment that Carl made. If we could get a look at the beginning of the year, so the seven one balances within the various accounts and funds and see which ones started the year at deficit. And what I mean by that is if you had surplus in one account at the end of the year, you make the transfer at the end of the year to cover the deficit, and then the next day, you know, you kind of reverse the, reverse the transfer, then, you know, you kind of, you kind of, your snapshot at six thirty looks good, but you really, you really didn't, you really overspent and then you just kind of started the next year in a hole. So I know that looks like to be the case in the lunch program, but maybe there's others as well. So I don't know if he, if he can provide that for us. So I'd say seven, you know, beginning of year, opening fund, you know, balances to see if there's any other ones that are in a negative position. The, the second.
Second question?
Yeah, the second question is, you know, in a lot of times, at least last year, it seemed like we look at the Board of Ed budget, we do, we do a lot of, well, this is what we spent this year and this is what we think we're going to, you know, so use that as the basis. And then there's, you know, here's the bridge to next year versus kind of building that budget from the bottom up. So, you know, kind of a more of a zero based budget approach where you, you kind of, you kind of throw away what you've done in the past and kind of build it from the ground up versus using last year's spend as the baseline and then just go up from there. But, you know, I wonder if, if at some point we need to, we need to kind of rebuild it and start it from the, from the ground up versus, versus year over year.
That's, that's a really. I'm sorry, that's, that's a really good idea, Mark. I think the auditor's comment to that effect was that they shouldn't be just looking at one year. They should be looking about three years back and, and get that average over the three years of how it's been spent. I know of one, one line item that was in the, in the report that, you know, it was sixty five thousand dollars a year for three years, and yet they were spending over a hundred thousand dollars in two of those years. Well, why would you be putting sixty five when you've got two years of spending over a hundred? You, you have to raise that, that line to, you know, unless you're going to do something very drastic in that area and have a plan. But it doesn't seem to be, you know, happening like that. So, you know, you're right. I mean, changing whatever they're doing, but I, I think it's either start from the ground up or go back further and get a better average of, of what was, you know, the actual. As far as people that were commenting on, on, you know, making things known, I did receive this today, which is a a statute ten dash two forty eight C from the State Board of Education to post and submit copy of current and projected expenditures and revenues. And it reads, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and each fiscal year thereafter, each local and regional Board of Education shall, on a quarterly basis, number one, post the board's current and projected expenditures and revenues on the internet website. number one, post the board's current and projected expenditures and revenues on the internet website of the board; and two, submit a copy of such current and projected expenditures and revenues to the legislative body of the municipality, or in a municipality where the legislative body is a town meeting, to the Board of Selectment." So right then and there is, this is our first level of compliance following up for fiscal year 2020, that we need to start seeing these quarterly reports coming due. And, and that's the, the first, you know, communication that, that they can initiate for us as we come to initiate dialogue with them.
You know, I, I think that this is a really good point at which, if you were to look for zero-based budgeting, that we have a new administration and a new business manager, that this is a good time for them to craft the budget, how they would like it to read and how, how they're, you know, what's in place. I think one of the, the problems that we've asked is we've looked for actual FTEs. We've heard about things such as positions being eliminated, but they're not able to really identify what bodies are in what positions at this time and what their payroll looks like. So if they can give us those things, we'll have a better idea of being able to, to, you know, predict what their needs actually are. I, I think that that's, you know, one of the questions is that the numbers they're starting from, are they accurate? So I'm hoping that those questions that, you know, we've kind of been asking are more supported by this audit. Paul, I see your hand. Michael, I saw your hand go back up. Is this a good time for us to work at just bringing up the rest of the executive summary? How would you like to do that, Tom?
I was just on what Tom had said, was that, you know, the quarterly basis report seems right if you have a board that you feel good about and is in good financial rear. I don't think that we're to that point. I would think we want more frequency up to a certain point until we feel like everything is, is correct.
I would agree with you, yes. But what I'm just saying, the reason I brought that up was, here we have another state statute that we need to be sure that the Board of Ed is complying with. You know, I agree quarterly right now is probably not enough. I would like to meet with the superintendent and say, okay, we're six months into the budget. Have we spent six months of our, of our, of our money allotted, or are we ahead, or are we behind? And what are you going to do? How are you going to address that?
We think that those actually should be addressed in the Finance Committee level, Tom. I think that, you know, if they are having regular meetings and they're reviewing their financials, we should be able to follow that as well. So that's been, I think, one of the, one of the clear problems with that. Mr. Timpinelli, do you want to, do you have another piggyback to this, or do you want us to move to the executive summary?
Just let me make one comment. It appears to me that all of us that have so far from either the Board of Finance or the Finance Committee of the Council, so far, it appears to me that we all agree that we now have before us a lengthy, heavy, meaningful document that points to at least a recent record of financial mismanagement within our education arena. And Tom, again, based upon a letter that you exposed earlier in the meeting, we now have a, a reaction, at least prepared, from some folks to that document. The document cites a number of very clear, very serious recommendations as to how this situation can be improved. And I'll go back to something that Michael Barker said earlier. It seems clear to me that we need a commitment quickly on the part of the Board of Education responsible for the implementation of this document as to how they intend to do that. What is their plan? What is their timeline? What resources do they need, if any, to enable that to happen? And how will that impact what is now around the corner, the next budget process that we need to go through that's going to be presented to us within a matter of weeks? There needs to be, within that document, clarification as to how these problems are going to be fixed so that the budget is more meaningful than it otherwise might be.
Excellent. Okay, we only have a few more things to read up on. I don't want to bore anybody because it is dry reading for sure. But when we get to gen, general ledger and accounting, based upon our review and the procedures we performed, we recommend that the district properly records all transactions gross versus net in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That properly recorded equipment financing notes, principal and interest payments as debt service verse in equipment accounts and established budget accounts. Record capital project fund activity in a separate capital project fund or submit the project to the town for approval. Record all education grants in the education grant fund verse netting against budgeted, budgeted expenditures. Implement procedures or additional training to ensure that purchases are recorded in the proper budget account. The future projects be formally approved by the town, and we consider revising, updating the current chart of accounts. The special revenue funds, they recommend that we properly monitor special revenue funds activity and limit expenditures charged to each program to the available balance. Any disbursements in excess of available funds should be charged to the education budget. Develop and implement formal policies for each fund regarding the allowable use of each fund. Any amounts used for any purpose other than the activity of the fund should require formal Board of Education approval and to develop a plan to eliminate the deficits for the remaining special revenue funds. With the special revenue funds, we need to determine whether the program should be reported as a special revenue fund or a general fund budget line. We need to determine whether funds with positive balances that are not restricted for a particular purpose can in fact be used to address the funds with deficit, deficit fund balances, and whether the fund should be recorded in another fund. As far as the cafeteria fund, review the process of budgeting amounts to be transferred from the cafeteria fund and that any transfer be approved by the board. Transfers should be dependent on the availability of the fund balance. When it comes to Munis, which we have talked about earlier tonight, review the system rights for all employees to ensure that employees have the minimum rights that are necessary to complete their job function. Restrict employees in the accounting department not, that, that, that they not have unrestricted administrative rights. Provide access to the IT director in the department to the Munis software system and the IT department monitor log activity. Review the current chart of accounts for compliance with the state of Connecticut, uniform chart of accounts, and for functionality and management reporting purposes. And to implement the use of the Human Resources Management Module and employee self-serve functionality. As far as NOVA time, they recommend that we develop a strategy to identify a plan and the necessary resources required to complete the implementation. Automation of the payroll process will create efficiency and reduce potential errors as compared to entering the data manually. When it comes to purchasing, they recommend the district implement procedures to comply with the town's purchasing policy requirements and comply with the district policy for requiring purchase orders for all purchases. We recommend that the town conduct a formal detailed training for district employees on the requirements of the town's purchasing policy. As far as payroll and human resources, implement procedures to properly segregate duties regarding access to employee pay rates and cash receipts. Implement procedures to recorded revenues based upon transactions and register reports or other supporting records verse the amount deposited. And that is the end of the executive summary.
Just for all to be aware that the executive summary just takes the findings from the rest of the report, put it into detailed areas to be looked at. There is quite a bit of information on each of these areas within the report. The entire report is available for review online at this point. I also saw it posted on social media. I do apologize to anyone who it was released to before the Board of Education had a chance to review it. That to me was not, should not have happened, so I'm glad to see that we are having the opportunity to review that. Given the second portion, I know that we did speak about some of those areas already. I have some questions already written down about the NOVA time and the purchasing as well. I think that payroll and human resources, this is a big area that we need to be looking at. They have, you know, three times the number of employees that we have on the town side, and they're managing quite a bit, so we need to make sure that they have those processes in place. Is there anybody who has further questions at this time or comments in regards to this area? Marty, I see your hand up.
I just want to be clear back, I, I, it's less financial and more process-driven, again, with regard to the Paris. I still remain confused how 39 people could be hired outside of the budget process. So obviously, there's a financial implication to that, but the bigger issue for me is how, how did it happen? And what are we doing in place to stop that from occurring again? I just don't understand how that could occur. And just one related comment to what Paula and Michael had referred to. I am a huge advocate of having individuals assigned to each line item and also having make, my presumption is the Board of Ed itself is responsible for the monitoring, the compliance of this, and the board chair of the Board of Ed is ultimately responsible for, for this. So if that's not the correct conclusion, I want to make sure I understand that. I think it's unclear to me now who in administration is responsible for each element, but I'm under, of the understanding that the board itself has to be responsible for compliance, and the board chair ultimately is responsible for all of this. So if that's not true, I want to make sure I understand who is responsible for getting it done and who's responsible for compliance. Thank you.
Elaine, you want the job back now? Elaine, are you listening? I'm sorry, that was my own personal, I couldn't help it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute. I do want to, I do want to mention one thing, though. One of the things that's not clear is the Paris may have been hired with a grant, and we're not seeing the proper allocation of the grant, which is one of the other comments they made.
Yeah, I, I think that part of it was the grants, but also the lack of records in the Special Education Department was noted that they had a lot of trouble finding those records. I think the paraprofessionals, that we need to keep in mind that PPEs, not IPs or IEPs, I got my letters all up today, but my, the IEPs that identify special education requirements and paraprofessionals don't happen until long after our budget process is done each year. Those things happen in the spring, and they're estimating their budget based on the current year. So if they have all of a sudden an influx of students who require Paris support due to IEPs, they may not have the ability to say no to that. So I don't know if it was, you know, maliciously done. I think it was, how they accounted for it is incorrect, and where they were actually being paid from or not being paid from, or, or how that they were identifying, you know, two, two part-time people as a full-time person. I'm not even sure how that happened, but I think it's important to know that, that, that's very hard for them to budget. So I'm not necessarily upset that there were more than they thought. I'm more upset how they accounted for it.
Again, this is Marty Isaac, I just want to be clear, I, I understand one or two. The, the report mentions 39.
I agree. I saw Michael Barker, your hand was up, and I also saw Joanne. Michael's passing, Joanne.
Thank you, Laney. Yeah, this is Joanne Glasser-Ornstein. I, I just, I just want to reiterate, I, I don't think that there's anything malicious going on, but I do feel very strongly, there's been a culture of having a budget and having an operating system for many, many years that have nothing to do with each other. At least that's my, as a newcomer to all of this process, that's what it looks like to me. To be able to, to, it doesn't appear that there was a lot of determination to stay with the budget. Or, or, you know, or, or in some cases even consider the budget. I understand, yes, there's records missing. There's people that are gone that maybe took those records with them. I don't think they did it maliciously, but it's ridiculous that there were like paper records that were backed up somewhere. But, so my hope is that, yeah, we're going to get away from that. But I think we really have to emphasize that if we have a budget, it means to mean something. And I don't think that it has.
Thank you. Christine Eliris?
Sorry, hang on. So I guess I'm, I'm trying to scroll through the PDF, and I'm trying to look to figure out if all of the Paris that are talked about in the 39 are special ed Paris, or if some of those for whom their payroll funding was obfuscated, let's just say, or confusing, were the kindergarten Paris as well.
That's a good question for the auditor. I, I can't say for sure. I don't know.
Anybody else have a question or wish to make a comment? I don't see any other hands at the moment. Okay, Tom, do you have anything further? Vicky, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, not directly at this time, obviously, listening to all these comments. I've gone through this report, and I'm going to provide some questions for the auditor as well for next week. You know, there's certain things in here that, generally speaking, members of the public may be confused about. You know, one, one such area is the budget support line that he has included all over this report, and people may not understand exactly what that means. So I'd like him to explain that for the public. And, you know, to, there are other areas too that I think need, need more explanation. The 39 Paris continue to bother me immensely, how that happened, and I, I really want him to be able to explain that to the public. So, but I will provide more, more questions as well.
Excellent. Okay, well, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I first want to thank Laney McHugh for being a tremendous co-host. And I want to thank the Board of Finance and all the alternates for joining us. I want to thank the community who has endured an hour and a half-long meeting, or yes, hour and a half-long, of some really dry material, but very concerning material. The bottom line here is we've talked about a lot of numbers and a lot of concerns. And the one thing that's been left out that I want everyone to understand too is that this process may not directly, may not directly affect our children and our staff, our teachers, and our Paris and everyone, but most certainly indirectly is very detrimental to what we're trying to do to provide a quality education in this town. And we have, we continue to rest upon our lawyer, our laurels. We continue to do more with less, and it comes to mind that maybe we don't have to do more with less if we took what we had and followed it and wrote it down and really had a plan moving forward. So these are the thoughts I have moving forward in the budget process. Our next meeting of this joint committee will be next Wednesday evening, January 13th at 7:00 PM, where we will have our auditor, Joe Cantafanti, with us to put all of this into a proper context and to, you know, address a lot of these questions and concerns that we brought forward tonight. After that process is over, I would, would believe that our next step would be to meet with the Board of Ed and the administration and, and start having a dialogue and a conversation and, and re, readdress this ongoing budget process as, as we go into 2021.
Okay. Carl, did I see your hand?
Yeah, my question was answered. I wanted to know when we were getting together with the Board of Ed. I think if the Board of Ed were part of this meeting tonight, you'd get a lot of the answers that you're searching for. You'd find out how paras are paid for with grants and you, and you'd find out why they do the things that they've done. So I think the we get together with them, the better. I would be looking at that, Carl, as the, the committee meetings week, January, like the last weekend and last weekend, Jack, January. Okay. So I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
I'm on.
Second? Thank you all very, very much for a tremendous evening. Appreciate your time and your commitment to our town. Have a good evening.